Of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, can I ask the clerk to please call the roll?
Councilman Gary Donovan.
Councilman Gary Donovan, Councilor at large, present.
Councilwoman Colleen O'Connor.
Councilwoman Colleen O'Connor, Councilor at large, here.
Councilman Ronald Quagliani.
Ron Quagliani, here.
Councilwoman Bridget Hoskey is absent. Councilwoman Mellie Garthwaite.
Councilwoman Mellie Garthwaite, Second District, present.
Councilwoman Sarah Akbarali.
Councilwoman Sarah Akbarali, Third District, present.
Councilman Mitchell Gallagnano is absent. Councilwoman Robin Wat Hamilton.
Councilwoman Robin Wat Hamilton, Fifth District, present.
Councilwoman Kathy Tucker is absent. Councilman Victor Boras.
Councilman Victor Boras, Eighth District, present.
Councilman Robert Bruno is currently absent. Councilman Stephen Johnson is currently absent. And Chairman Peter Massaro.
Yes, I'm here. Chairman Peter Massaro, Sixth District, Councilman.
Can I ask the clerk to please read the call of the meeting?
West Haven City Council budget hearing scheduled. The West Haven City Council Finance Committee, council as a whole, will conduct budget meetings on Mayor Nancy R. Rossi's recommended budget for fiscal year 2023, 2024. The meetings will take place as follows in the City Council Chamber's Third Floor, West Haven City Hall, 355 Main Street.
Thank you, Stacy. So Neil, tonight our lineup is six o'clock is Finance and Grants, six thirty IT, and seven o'clock West Haven Board of Education.
Oh, we had six o'clock, didn't we?
That's why.
Why don't you let him? He's got a lot of people there.
I can't.
Oh, okay.
It's fine.
Yeah, I can't because it's noticed this way, so I'd be happy to do it, but I can't. So first up is the Finance Department slash Grants Department. Finance Director Taylor is here to handle those, both of those departments, I believe. And Mr. Taylor, if there's any open remarks you'd like to share with us, if not, we can dive into the budgets.
No, no really open remarks, just ready to take your questions.
Okay. Let me just state for the record that I'm filling in for Chairwoman Hoskey for tonight. So we'll go around the table, if you will. Finance Committee has first bite of the apple, and then we'll turn it over to the rest of the council members. So the Finance Committee could ask their one or two questions first, and then we'll turn it over. So anybody from the Finance Committee that has a question for Mr. Taylor? Councilwoman Hamilton?
Hello, Mr. Taylor. How are you? All right, I'm doing well. So the first thing I want to ask is about the grant writer position.
I think Grants was, oh, is it, or both at the same time, sorry.
Or, yeah.
I'm sorry.
Is that, can we do it like that?
That's quite all right. I think we're combined.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
No, it's all right. I want to stay in Waterwasser.
What's your question?
So my first question is, has that position been filled?
No, it is not. We currently have our Grants Accountant, and we have an Assistant Grant Writer. And I'm sure all of you are aware that we no longer have a Grants Coordinator. He resigned, well, he retired, just recently.
Okay.
The city is actively trying to get those jobs posted at this time.
And for that position, it's like seven thousand dollars more than it was before? How come?
It was anticipated for a partial year in 23. Yeah, the Grant Writer would be paid more than an Assistant.
Okay. And who, with the absence of the Grant Coordinator, who we know left, a person left, like who's in charge of that department right now?
This guy over here.
You are.
Unfortunately, yes. Yeah, so we have hired a consultant, but, you know, consultant will not be in charge of the department. However, the consultant is knowledgeable in the running of the department and the things that need to be done. And so she's on board. Met her for the first time today.
Okay.
But, yeah, so we actively attempting to get, we had to write a new job description, and we're working with the union to get the job slotted and priced. There were some changes to the job description because the old job description had no supervision in it. In other words, no need to supervise others. So obviously, there are three people on this list that that person would need to supervise.
All right. Will we be able to see that job description once it's, can you send it to Diane?
You know, there's nothing unpublic about it.
Right.
Yeah, so.
I'd like, we'd like to see it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
David, would you be able to provide us with a, you know, listening to the MARB meeting last week, they had requested a list of all of the new positions and the current open positions. Could you also share that with us? I think that'd be important.
I just don't have it with me tonight. I do have the open, the open positions were given to me just an hour ago, I guess, from Panamino. And it's just a matter of me accumulating it here.
Yeah, whenever you could email it to us. We'll be here for a better part of the month, so.
Hope you're longer than that.
That'll be fine. So I want to go to your, the comptroller page, if we could. Fifty-one. So the Chief Accountant, so there's an incumbent in that position currently that's in the union. So I noticed that there's a significant raise in the budget, actually ten thousand dollars. So how do we achieve that as their union position, and I'm sure they didn't get that percentage increase across the board?
That was me trying to do something probably the wrong way, and I apologize for that. I would like very much to work with the union to give this individual the raise that was not given this individual when they got a promotion several years ago.
Okay.
For whatever reason. And there's some inequity there. If you compare that role to other bergs that are very close to us, the salary that I'm recommending is at least ten thousand dollars less than that person could make in no further.
So you'll work with the union to?
That is my intention, and I put it here. Probably should have stuck it in contingency and brought it up tonight.
Don't worry, we may likely do that.
Okay.
Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Financial Services.
Yeah.
Five-two-four-two-zero. It's kind of a broad title. What is that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars encompass?
Yeah, it's, there's some, well, for this year, there's some consultancy and things like that that we, you know, we had to do in order to fill vacant positions. We do have, right now, there are a number of catch-all type things that are going in there, including the security guards for this building, get charged there. Not where I want it. Not that I could do anything very quickly about that, but that's in there. Anytime we do need some extra help on something, it'll get charged there. I'm sorry, I'm grasping for straws on that. But I can give you a little more analysis.
I mean, that's why I asked. Really, you know, the line item doesn't fit what's being drawn out of there. So I know, listen and I, you're new to the process, I'm not.
Yeah.
So I, you know, every year I mention that we really need to get a little bit more granular with some of these.
Sure.
These items, because, you know, when I'm Financial Services, you know, I'm thinking financial services, not security guards or consultants.
Right. We also have bank fees, or the bank fees, which I think is an appropriate use of an account called Financial Services.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think this would be a great place to put something like that, you know, the detail sheet that's provided for the mayor, but it's, there's nothing there.
And what's the overall spend for security guards on a yearly basis?
I don't know.
All right, so that's a, if you could, some, you know, some you'll be able to do now. Yeah, others, you could just simply send us all an email to kind of, the things that you can't answer tonight, that'd be helpful.
No problem.
All right, I'll yield the floor.
I have a question.
Council, hold on, Councilwoman Akbarali, then Councilwoman O'Connor.
Okay, under Comptroller, it says Payroll Assistant in Finance. FY twenty-four, we're planning on having two of them. Do we have someone already set in that position?
We have one person in the position now, which was a transfer from Personnel this year.
Right.
We're looking to hire another. We're finding that the amount of work that needs to be done to do it correctly is more than one person can do, especially when there are vacations and other, that just complicates it even more.
Right.
We need to create some review and backup, and trying to find somebody on the rest of the team that has time available to do sufficient backup and be up to date in their training. It's just not possible with the size of our staff.
Right. Would that be an equal position?
It is budgeted that way.
Right, that's what I noticed. So I just wanted to know in the job description if it would be.
Yeah, it would be the same job description.
Okay.
Yeah.
And under Consultant, are we not planning on hiring another consultant for FY twenty-three, twenty-four?
Consult, you mean in Financial Services?
Yes.
Yeah. Well, that, this budget anticipates that we would be fully staffed.
Okay.
It includes fully staffing for a Finance Director.
Okay.
As you know, we don't have a separate position of Finance Director right now.
Right.
I have, I have hired a consultant right now to do the Assistant Finance Director as much as I can give him.
Right, okay.
And by the way, he's dynamite, so really happy with the guy I got.
Yeah.
But, you know, as I'm trying to keep up with everything else, he's been very helpful. Now, will we hire, will we have a new Finance Director in July? I don't know. I wouldn't.
That was my other question.
Yeah, my opinion, no. But that's just my opinion. Typically, it's easier to appoint a Finance Director at the beginning of your term.
Right. That makes sense. When we do find out, could you give us a projected date on when that would happen, if you have an idea of when that will be?
I, I, I wouldn't, that would be such a guess for me.
Okay.
I don't, I don't know that the mayor, that's really a question for the mayor.
Yeah. Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate it. I'm all set. Thank you, Chairman.
Councilwoman O'Connor?
I don't know if you can answer this question, but it's a concern of mine. The audit group that MARB has in Whittlesey, I know you've been working very closely with them.
Yes.
But I know that their report isn't due for another couple of weeks now. How much can they really request to, and will it change the budget at all?
Well, it would have to come through you if we were going to change the budget. I anticipate that they will make some suggestions that would involve us spending more money in the budget. I have, I have put a little extra money in contingency with no formula to try to anticipate those kind of things happening. Do I have enough there? I don't know. Some of the things that people are throwing around and speculating are, would be quite costly, and especially to my department. However, and would they make things better for a finance team? Absolutely. They're all great ideas. Do we, as a community, have the funds to support it? I'm not sure where it would come from, but, you know, I have put some money in contingencies. We're looking good this year. And a lot of the budgeting that was done for next year was based on this year's combination of budget and projection. So, yeah, I just can't speculate exactly what'll come out of that. I mean, they've got to go to the MARB, then the MARB has to look at it. And the MARB does what the MARB does. And then, but nothing gets done without this council saying that's what we're going to do.
I can jump on that. The MARB line item went from a hundred thousand dollars this year to six hundred thousand dollars next year. So there's a half a million dollars in there for something. I would imagine it's for all these consultants, right?
That's exactly what it's for. The MARB has set aside three point nine million dollars and instructed us last year when we were doing the five-year plan that they wanted it paid back in six years. A paid back, well, they hadn't spent it yet. So I told them I'd be happy to pay it back, but let's wait till you spend it. And so we did a projection, and I, you know, tried to put in here what the city could afford and keep to the mill rates and the fund balance growth to pay them back in that six-year period. The six hundred represents the same number I had in the five-year plan for that for twenty-four last year. So we tried to keep that steady. The less movement I show them, the better I am. But if you want me to change that number, obviously, we will.
David, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Are you good for him?
I'm good for him.
All right. Anybody else from Finance? Okay, Councilman Donovan. Thanks again for coming tonight.
Oh, you're welcome.
Couple of questions. Getting back to the, in the comptroller, about the payroll assistant that Councilwoman Akbarali was talking about, are those full-time jobs?
Yes, they are.
Is it possible, and I'm just trying to do my due diligence, the second job, could that be a part-time? Because with a full-time, I mean, you've got benefits, you've got all this other stuff. Could that job be done with a part-time?
I really haven't looked at it that, that way. I don't, I really don't think so. There are probably a year's worth of projects that need to get done in that area. There are issues with the setup of ADP. There are issues with the way it was used prior to our new payroll clerk being in there. And I guess I don't have any end to that. I do not believe so. I don't believe you'd find somebody.
Do you know if this is one of the jobs that MARB wanted to add?
I know that it's, well, MARB doesn't want to do anything yet, but it's been hinted to me that what I need is a payroll manager. That would not be part-time.
Right.
And that would not be at this price.
No. I get, I get that. All right, the other question I had was, it's on page forty-seven for us. The, you got the Grants Coordinator, right? And obviously, we don't, he has since retired. But we're going from ninety-three, we're going down twenty-three thousand.
Yeah, the basic reason is that the Grants Coordinator job is, was rated at seventy thousand. That's the union rating. However, specifically, the individual that was there had a few licenses that the city also was using that person for, and so agreed to pay him for the work involved in those licenses. Flood plane manager, and something to do with underground storage of these.
And then I think, I think that was, yeah, I think that's all I had at this moment. Thank you.
Sure. Any, can I?
Cheer. I'm sorry.
With the fear of sticking my foot in it. Any questions on debt or any of the other kind of, because you didn't, you don't have a hearing on those, but those are finance.
Okay, we got a lot of debt. Don't worry. We're not there yet.
Okay, just want to make sure.
Just because I hit six thirty doesn't mean you could leave.
Well, I got IT coming on at six thirty.
That's all right. Chairman Sarah?
Hi, Dave. Thanks for having me, Dave. My little pet peeve, I know now you're in charge of the Finance Department, and I know there's a great problem with supervision there. I constantly get a problem with them. If somebody's doing payroll and that payroll person is out on vacation, nobody else could do payroll. Is there a problem that this city can't get people to do each other's jobs to cover each other, where we could save some money somehow, so we don't have to wait three weeks for somebody or a bill to get paid, and somebody else could do it, and this person works in the Finance Department, they should be able to do other people's jobs? I mean, when I ran my department, we all did different jobs, all of us, including the chief. So, I mean, I can't understand why this city doesn't frown on that, seeing that, you know, we're hurting, we're a small city, and we were hurting all these past two years, and people couldn't do certain jobs because this one wasn't trained for, this one, this wasn't trained. Is there a way we could get people to do each other's jobs when they're either sick or on vacation, and God forbid they get hurt? I mean, is there rules against that?
Well, there are some union restrictions that we're working with, and as I write new jobs, that the, for example, the Budget Coordinator that I've got in here, that job specifically has in it to learn the other roles in the department and be able to serve as a backup. Since I've gotten here, my Cash Receipts Clerk has subbed for my Accounts Payable Clerk when she was on vacation. So we're doing that. There are certain roles, however, that we, you know, we don't have backup for. Payroll is one of them. I was attempting to do that, and it was in my plan to do that. However, I've been convinced that just having a backup is not going to get us where we need to be. I've got tons of overtime I'm paying for right now on the one payroll specialist that I have. There aren't enough hours in the day to back that up, as well as back her up when she's on vacation. Right now, she's taking her laptop with her on vacation, which is just not the way to do this. You know, we all need our vacations.
I understand that. I do understand that. I mean, that's without a doubt, but I mean, there should be a way of helping out this cut down cost at our end and the taxpayers' end, where somebody could cover somebody else. We don't have to pay this tremendous overtime.
You know, I can only speak to my department, which is decimated right now, and there just isn't enough, there aren't enough hours in the day for the people that are there to do the jobs that they have.
Is there anybody on biweekly payroll in this city?
No.
I mean, because that's where you're going to get your economies of scale. So you only have to payroll twice a month instead of four times a month.
I really can't. There, no, the answer to your question is no, and I need to be there.
I'll address it when the Personnel Director comes in, because I think there are contracts that are up, and negotiations are going to start. But, I mean, really.
You are correct.
Yeah, so.
I'm all set.
Good, Chairman, thank you.
That is a great solution to a lot of this problem, by the way.
Well, when they're doing it every week, they can never take a breath.
And you can never, right.
You know, I think that's contractual too.
All right, but there's some contracts up this year, so. Anyone else have any questions for Mr. Taylor? Councilwoman Garthwaite?
Hi, Dave.
Oh, I thought you were going to.
All my questions are answered except for one little nitpick. In your overtime line, you have your projected fifty thousand six hundred and forty-three. You've already spent twenty-nine thousand two hundred and ninety-seven dollars, and your question is forty-five hundred. Could you explain that to me?
Sorry, I'm not on the right page. Just give me a sec, please.
Fifty-two.
Fifty-two.
Thank you. Yes. The way we budget is to be fully staffed, and if we believe that if we're fully staffed, then we can limit our overtime. I'm working a lot of overtime, and some of my people are working a lot of overtime, including, including the Chief Accountant that we were talking about earlier, and the Payroll Assistant that we have now. We did not anticipate that much overtime when we were talking about this a year ago. People were talking about this a year ago, it wasn't me. But it's just the fact of what we're into right now, with me covering two roles, one and a half roles, if you will, and with our payroll assistant being worked that way. It, yeah, we're, we're just behind in a lot of things, and that's why we're working some overtime to get caught up.
So where are we going to get the, are you going to keep this at forty-five hundred?
Well, so, I'm sorry. So I started answering that question, but I didn't finish. Sorry about that. Just kind of addressed the why we are where we are today.
Okay.
This budget anticipates that if we were fully staffed, we would not, we would not have to pay a lot of overtime through the year. It also projects every single person at the top step. So our open positions are at the top step. We don't hire typically at the top step, we hire, you know, the first step. That gap, that gap plus the, plus the salary that we would pay them provides us a little bit of cushion if we have to move some salaries into overtime.
Okay.
And so that's the method the city's been using to budget. We're getting some pushback from the MARB on that.
Yeah.
On how they would like us to budget. And I could go either, I've done it both ways. So it doesn't matter to me how we, where we land, but, you know, that is, that's a computation we could do. It'll cost you some more overtime, probably, but I can definitely do that.
Okay, that's it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All set, Ma?
Yes, thanks.
Councilwoman Hamilton?
Yes, ma'am.
So, Mr. Taylor, we all listened to, or both of us listened to the MARB meeting, and they weren't happy at this last meeting. And in the Comptroller's Department, we see that employees are going from seven to eleven, employees, right? Is it a, is it going to be to nine?
No, it's nine to eleven. We're adding two.
Nine to eleven. Okay, nine to eleven. So I have a very sensitive but important question. Whose job is it or will it be to make sure that processes are followed, meaning those, that fifty thousand dollar benchmark, that we don't go over it unless the process has been followed?
Right.
Whose job is that?
That, that job lands with the Finance Director and the Purchasing Director. There's two lines of defense there that would ultimately, you know, make sure that things don't slip through. Purchasing Directors is an earlier line of defense, because any purchase should, all purchases should be on purchase orders. And if the purchase order is more than fifty thousand dollars, well, there's, you know, clue number one, if you will, and all contracts pass through them as well. So that would be the first line of defense. The second is that the Finance Director is responsible for reviewing all payments. And until the payment is made, you know, until, until he reviews a payment, it doesn't happen. So that, those are the two, two lines of defense that we have. But ultimately, it's the Finance Director's job.
Right, because we really just sincerely need to do better.
Oh.
You know, and I won't keep on beating that horse.
Yeah, that's, that's a horse that I've been beating since I walked in the door, so.
You've got to get there. You just have to. Thank you.
You're welcome. And I'll continue to do so.
I appreciate that.
Yes.
So Dave, in the interest of time, I have three quarters of a page here, but I'm, some of these are easy. And then the ones you can't answer, you could get back to me, right? So, so the benefit cost per new hire. So we used to, we used to do the maximum, you know, family, whatever. So, we used to, we used to do the maximum, you know, family, whatever. It was like, I think, twenty-four thousand. Do you have a number for what the benefits are?
What I used was the average that we're paying amongst the, the whole group. I knew what the in, I knew what the increase would be based on, uh, input from the Connecticut's plan. They've, they've already published that. And, and we just applied that to the, to the total. So, we assume that as we hire new people, they will reflect the people we have, if you will, I think.
And the percentage increase with the partnership plan is what?
It was seven point one or two for, um, active and four point one or two for, for, for other tidings.
Okay. And then page ninety-nine, the, um, the insurance line doubled, right? It went from, what am I looking at? Page ninety-nine doubled, right? All the insurances, right? So, uh, auto, auto damage went from fifty thousand to two-twenty. General liability went from two-twenty-five to three-fifty.
Yeah, so.
They all went way up. So did we, did we just get it wrong this year?
I would say we got it wrong in the budget, yes. If you look at twenty-two actual and if you, if twenty-one actual were on here, you'd see the trend.
All right.
So, these, I, what I had to do here was I, I pulled up the trend on every single one of these and, and I based the budget on, on that trend.
Yeah, no, so I understand. So that's based on a trend is fine. So we got it wrong this year.
Yeah, I do believe we got it wrong this year, yes.
Um, heart and hypertension went from four hundred thousand this year to forty-two thousand next year?
Yeah, that's based on our, our valuation from our, uh, from PMA, the people who handle that. We just don't have any more claims coming through on that.
And the claims that you have are unfortunately passing away, or?
They're, they're mostly on the fireside, so you'll see an increase there.
Yeah.
We just don't have it in, in, in the city.
Okay. Electricity. So, we went from seven point six kilowatts, seven point six cents for kilowatt to twelve point eight or, or whatever. Do we have electricity contracts in place?
Yes, we do. And, uh, but they're not, you know, they don't extend out forever. Um, I, Rick Spire did the analysis on that, um, with, using the contracts and our, and our usage. And, um, you know, based on his analysis, the increases have been reflected in the budget.
So we, we could, I could ask him more detailed questions when he comes?
We surely can. And I think purchasing, I think, yeah, purchasing on tomorrow night?
Yeah.
Be a good time to do that.
Yep. Um, my two comments on grants are, and I've been asking this for a couple of years and it's, it's kind of semantics, but I have no idea why grants sits in the planning and zoning org chart, right? I mean, you're, you're supervising them, um, on an interim basis now, but I've always thought that grants, since they work so closely with, with, um, finance, that they should fall within that umbrella. I'm just going to make that statement again. I make it every year and, and I just don't think it had, I don't think they report to the planning and zoning people, right? But they're sitting within their budget line. So.
I'll comment that I agree.
Just, yeah, ju- ju- just a, just a comment.
Yeah.
And so the grants people now, we, so not too long ago, we used to have one grant person, right? The grants coordinator. And then we were fortunate enough to get a second and then we're fortunate enough to get a third and now you're requesting a fourth. And I'm not, listen, at the end of the day, those jobs should pay for themselves if they're doing their job, right? And one thing I'm, I'm really hot on is, is before we think about bonding is, I, I'm telling you, and, and I, I wish you would come back and prove me wrong. But I think that if we go through all of our grants, that there's a lot of money out there still on the table that we never drew down, which means that we use city, city, you know, cash to pay for the expenses and we still haven't drawn down on these grants. And there may be millions of dollars sitting there that we could utilize instead of, um, bonding for some of these capital projects.
And, and we owe you that analysis.
Is, is it ongoing, or?
It is, it is in the works. Um, and I'm, I'm sorry I didn't follow back up on it over the last couple of weeks, but.
Yeah, and to me, it's going to.
I was looking for that.
Yeah, and I'm going to be interested in that before you put a bonding package in front of us, whether that's August, September. So, I'd be interested in that analysis. You know, and, and lastly, I just, I appreciate the budget. And it's really not even such, so much of a commentary for this year. It's, you know, the, the recommended increase is point nine seven, which, you know, is about two hundred dollars a household, sixteen, seventeen bucks a month. It's still, you know, for people that are struggling, it's still, it's still, you know, everything else is up, right? Gas, groceries, utilities, and now, and now taxes. But if you follow that five-year plan to twenty-twenty-eight, that is absolutely unreasonable and not sustainable to go from thirty-four, where we are today, to forty in, in, in five years and then throw on another fifteen, fourteen or fifteen mills for the, the fire department and then the sewer use fee. So, there's got to be some serious mitigation between now and then to bring that projected mill rate down. So I'm going to struggle when it comes time to vote for that five-year plan because I just, I, there's no way that, that the community could survive with a, a, you know, that type of, of mill rate increase.
Yeah, I, it's, I live here too.
Mm-hmm.
And, and it, it is frightening. Uh, we, we, we have more challenges this year and I think I might have mentioned some of these. You know, we've, we've got continual pressure to grow our general fund balance and there are, are monies that drive that mill rate up to grow our fund balance. We, I was not aware, but, you know, our internal service funds for medical and liabilities are, are grossly underfunded. So that's another fund balance, if you will, that we're having to grow over the period. We also have, um, well, again, paying back the MARB, four million dollars, you know. Year, year seven, or year, actually, year six, which is not on here, there won't be anything in that line, you know. But, yeah, these are, we have huge, huge wins that are facing us to face. So, that tells us we need to get serious about revenue projects, mitigation projects, attracting new business to our bird that raises the value of property, that brings more people into it. And, and causes other people to say, hey, I want to do business in West Haven because it's, we, we need to look like Milford down by our beach, you know? It, it would be great, so.
We also need to be, we need to be aligned. So, I mean, my, philosophically, I mean, I don't know who decided that, okay, you're going to, you're going to accomplish everything from A to Z in five years when it took us fifty years to get into this mess. So to me, I think, you know, I'm not shirking the responsibility. We need to do all those things, but in a five-year mark, I think it's not reasonable to, to the community. Again, it took us decades to get where we are today. It's going to take us, I think, more than five years to dig our way out of it or we're going to have everybody leaving, so.
Yeah, I think it's aggressive. I, um, there are pr- out, outside pressures that cause those numbers to be on that page.
No, I get it.
Yeah, and, and, um, what we can really do as a community, what we can lay on the backs of our citizens, may not be the numbers that are on that page. And, yeah, I.
And I recognize that.
I, I hear you.
Yeah, I recognize that we could amend the budget and we likely will, because that's, that's what we do through our due diligence. But at the end of the day, you know, we're not the final approver and we've amended budgets in the past that got kicked back to us, right? So, but it's, I don't think, for me, it's not going to stop what, what I do and I don't think it's going to stop anybody here from what they do.
Yeah, so just, just for your information, the MARB never approved the five-year plan last year. I stopped asking them to do it and, and now it's this year. So they may never approve a five-year plan, no matter what we put on it. So, what's important, as you just brought up, is this.
Right. Anyone else before we move on to IT? Councilwoman Hamilton, go ahead.
Is that finance?
That'll be IT.
Yeah, let's, yeah, ask that to Jermaine.
Okay, thanks.
Councilman Donovan?
Just real quick, the, the budget coordinator that you're, you're requesting, how'd you come up with that amount? Did we do a survey around time or?
Let me see what that amount is and I'll tell you whether.
Eighty-two, two-twenty.
Eighty-two, two. Uh, that amount was based on what we thought the, the job would rate at as, as we looked at the, uh, six-eighty-one ratings for different jobs. I did not survey what it would be outside of here. That's still, we're still working with, uh, that union to come up with a rating for that job. In fact, I just rewrote it again the other day. There were some supervisory aspects to the job that would put it further, would made, would have made it a higher-priced job and I, I'm trying to get it back down to, to this level.
All right, thank you.
I, I, this, this job to me will be, uh, the, the second, the second level job in my department with the, with the chief accountant being the first under me. So that, that job, so far, is level of importance and the, and the amount of education and experience that we will be looking for when we hire that individual.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman.
Anyone else? Okay, I don't see any hands raised. Mr. Taylor, thank you very much.
Sure.
All right. Next up is IT. Jermaine is with us.
Yep.
Someone stand over here for moral support.
Okay, the IT budget's on page fifty-five and there's also some, some IT-related items in the capital non-recurring and also the capital, um, budget. So all those, those three items are up for discussion. Open it up to the finance committee. Any, any questions for IT at this point? Councilwoman Hamilton?
Hi Jermaine, how are you?
Good, how you doing?
Good, thanks. So I'm looking at your department and I noticed that everybody's getting big raises except for you. Okay.
That amount a hundred percent.
It looks a lot, like a lot.
Sure of. Um, I think what you're probably seeing is that we've added a new position in the department.
Yep, the help desk.
Which is for a help desk.
Yep.
In terms of everyone else is getting an increase except for me.
Well, I mean, you're, you're getting an increase, but the other increases just look bigger.
They may be in a different union. I don't know.
Oh, is that what it is?
You're on the same union?
Am I, am I reading that right though, that it looks like six percent, like six percent raises?
Was this the?
This might have been how we get to step four.
That's like big.
Yeah, so that.
How come?
There's a, there's a couple of things happening here, I think. We just, we just take a look at. I'm not, I think, what I think is happening here is, is that the, that there is a step, there's a new step being put in place for the eleven oh-three union. Which basically doubles the raise in, um, for those people who've been here for a while.
Have these people been here for a while?
So, in the case of the first one, yes. In the case of the second one, as I mentioned, when we were talking about finance, we budget at the highest step. And, and that ensures coverage for overtime in case, you know, in case we don't, in case we need it. So that would reflect the highest step for that, for that position as opposed to just a, just a small raise.
I think if you could get back to us to confirm those numbers because they don't, they don't, if they're all in the union, there's different percentages involved and, and if you could just verify that those, because page fifty-five should be their actual salary, just, just wages. There's nothing, should be nothing else in there.
Yes.
And, um, you know, uh, help desk, I think that is important to have somebody, you know, do the help desk. Will they be just helping just city hall or will they be extended to like the police and the board of ed and the library?
So, so they'll just be helping city hall.
So is that a thirty-five, how many hours, is that a full-time position?
That's going to be a thirty-five hour position, yes.
And there's enough, you know, enough going on where that person will need?
Plenty of work, yes.
All right, and this is a, it's not filled yet?
It's not, no.
Okay. All right, that's it for me for now.
Anyone else in finance? Sarah? I'm sorry, Councilwoman Acton Riley?
It's okay. Um, hi Jermaine, how are you?
Good, how you doing?
Good. Um, Councilwoman Hamilton actually asked the question about the help desk technician. Do you have a projected date of when they're going to have that person hired?
Um, no, we do not. Um, I recently wrote the job description and sent it over to HR, who, HR will be reaching out to the union. I believe it's a six-eighty-one position.
Okay.
Who just need to sign off and then we'll be able to post that job.
So it should be pretty soon. Okay, that's great. And then the IT security engineer, is that fraud or how would be, what is their position exactly?
So, we recently lost our IT security engineer. So, we're going to be looking to rehire.
Okay.
Um, someone else. It seems like it's very hard to keep, uh, IT personnel because of the rates. So I'm hoping that I will be able to get someone at this rate again.
Right. Would they be working with mostly like viruses and?
So, they'll be mainly working with making sure the security posture of the city is good and making sure that, um, we are patching like our firewalls, our Windows-based computers, um, just making sure that we're, we're as secure as we should be according to standard protocols.
Okay.
You're welcome.
So, uh, Jermaine? So I, I got, I want to go to the capital non-recurring in the capital, so it's, it's page one, one-twenty and one-twenty-four. So it seems, it appears that you have requests for firewalls, core switch, firewalls, core switches, wireless access points in the capital non-recurring budget and you also have those same requests in the capital budget. Is that a duplicate ask?
No.
No.
So that's something new this year. We included the capital non-recurring in the capital budget so that you get a complete picture of, of the total capital. And it's, and it's actually, if you look on there, um, in the, in the funding source column, you'll see it says capital non-recurring. And that, those items are identical to the other listing. So if you look down below, the total cap non-recurring is three-eleven-five-hundred and on the capital, capital non-recurring page, oh shoot, yes, it's three-eleven-nine-five-hundred.
But cap, so just so, so I. Refresh my memory. Cap, capital non-recurring are operating dollars, right? Tax dollars, while capital is bonded money.
That's correct.
So, so, so even though it's in the capital projects, they're not bonded, right?
It's not completely correct. If you look at the bottom, the last page, page one-twenty-four. They're, they're specifically lined out. We're not bonding, we don't bond most of, and we don't bond cap non-recurring. We do bond, obviously, the bonding.
Right.
And clean water fund is, is a bit of a mix.
Okay, so it's, so I got it. So it's shown, it's shown in here, um, but it's the same, it's the same number.
And it is a change from last year. We, we haven't done this before.
Yeah.
But, you know, we were reviewing about, well, why doesn't, why doesn't this tie to that, you know?
Right, I got it. So it's not a duplicate. Understood, thank you. Anyone else questions for IT? Yes, Councilman Donovan?
How you doing, Jermaine?
Good.
I heard, correct me if I was wrong, you were saying that the, uh, that help desk technicians' jobs will be posted soon, possibly?
Yes.
I, should we, shouldn't the council okay that job before that job gets posted? You know what I'm saying?
I'm pretty sure that you guys have to approve it first.
That's why I was asking if.
May I?
Yeah.
So, the, uh, the mayor has requested because of the work that needs to get done, that we pull that together as quickly as possible. Um, I'm sure it's her intention to, to talk to you about it.
Oh, I, I think I understand it, just, you know, I mean, you're posting the job and then we decide, no, we don't need that job and now, you know, and so.
Well, careful.
It's like putting a car before the horse.
It is.
Yeah, me and Joe just don't hire anybody for finding these jobs, right?
You could do all your legwork, so come July one, you're ready to go, if it stays within the budget, but don't offer a position that's not funded yet, right?
Yeah, right. Can I, can I, mind if I make just a couple of comments on the salaries in the ID, IT department? None of these salaries in the IT department, except perhaps the, um, help desk technician are, are competitive. And frankly, that's why we don't have a security. And frankly, that's why we don't have a security engineer right now.
Right.
You know, it, I don't know what keeps them here, I'm just, I don't. And so, I hope we can find somebody, Derek, you were asking about the ninety-one. But that, that's not competitive. They can make a lot more somewhere else, especially if they're, if they're in the private sector. But if we look at the other towns and cities around here, they would also do better.
I don't disagree. The council, not this council, but I think the council before had a pretty good discussion about, you know, kicking the tires and evaluating what model works best for the city. Do we have an IT manager and maybe an employee and then supplemented by a contractor? Do we have a contractor? Do we have an all-city employee? And we asked for that analysis to be done. Whether it was done or not, I don't know, it never came back to this table. So, I get it. I see the salaries and I work in the private sector and I work with IT people and I recognize that you're, you're, we're not gonna compete with the private sector, so.
You're about halfway there.
Yeah. So we may wanna consider, if you know that we're gonna have difficulty with these, and again, I'd argue that, you know, these are the salaries now, but again, there's, there hasn't been any proposal put in front of us to increase those salaries, right?
No, there hasn't.
So. So if you think that you're gonna have vacancies or continue to have vacancies for a long period of times, just like you do with finance, I would consider that you look towards some private consultant help to, so we don't fall behind, because we also know, for those of us who've been here long enough, that we had a data breach here several years ago because we couldn't keep up with the proper equipment and the proper maintenance and so on and so forth, so. So I think we're open to looking at different proposals.
Yeah, so we are currently working with Roberts Half Technology who will be looking for candidates for us. Roberts Half seem to be coming in a little bit higher as well, but we will be able to get staff in as soon as we review some of the resumes.
Yeah.
If it has to be on a consultant basis, you know, for short term, yes, that's, that's included.
But I think the problem again that we could potentially see is we won't be able to keep these candidates here if we, if we hire them outright. They're gonna be unhappy and I think that's what happened with our IT security engineer.
So, an analysis of this, I know when I was at Derby, I felt like we could've done it a lot cheaper. We were outsourced and I just, I just could not believe what they were targeting us, so, but it's a fair point, we should, we should do that.
You know, there's economies of scale. Yeah, I know Councilwoman Hamilton mentioned it, but for whatever reason, we bifurcate ourselves. It's, it's City Hall and then it's the Police Department and then it's the Fire Department and then it's the Library and I recognize that we don't have oversight over all of these entities, but in a collaborative effort, right, to be able to, you know, have one, you know, one buy-in, you know, would probably get us to where we need, so. I think we're, we're happy to look at anything you provide us, but you need to provide us something, so.
So we recently had an analysis done by CCM.
Yeah.
Who provided us with details in terms of the ranges of what some of the employees in different cities are actually making. Such as myself or even such as my supervisor or even a security network engineer. So we do have that information if you would like to see that information.
Yeah, I mean, I think we would like to see, yeah, sure, we'd like to see it. Again, you know, we're, this is the opportunity, right? During the budget time to request that, that, that's why we asked for your budget request, because a lot of times the department will request and the mayor will chop it out, but I don't see that. I think what you requested or whoever did the budget for IT, that's what was recommended by the mayor, so. You know, if we don't have that request, then, you know, it's difficult for us to act on that. But yeah, if you could send the information, send it to the council admin assistant and then they'll, or Stacy and they'll get it to all of us.
Thank you.
I think the departure of our security engineers caused us to think different ways since the budget was submitted, unfortunately.
And not only that, part of the problem too is us just taking a look at the union, we're not sure how that would work, so that's why this wasn't even included in the upcoming budget here.
So Jermaine, you're the IT manager?
Correct.
And which position is currently filled? The IT supervisor?
Correct, infrastructure supervisor, yes.
And then the other, the engineer is open and the technician is a new request?
Correct.
Got it. Any other questions for Jermaine about IT? Well, you wanna know about that phone system?
Page forty.
I guess my question would be like, what's driving up the expense?
What's driving the expense?
Yeah.
What's driving it down?
Down?
Right. So, we managed to reduce our ISP costs by eighteen point seven five percent in the upcoming fiscal year because we recently upgraded all the networks throughout the entire city. So we went from like ten megs, which is super slow, to like one gig of speed. But the gig of speed is actually gonna cost us less than the ten meg that we were paying, currently paying for. So that's what drove down the cost.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
And I was looking at it opposite, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Councilwoman Garthrey?
Hi Jermaine.
Hi.
I have a couple little questions. Can you remind me again what the maintenance service agreement is? Last year, our actual was four hundred and forty-six thousand nine hundred and sixty-seven dollars. This year, we're projecting three hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars. I'm just not, I'm not sure what the maintenance service agreement is.
Three twenty-four or three fifty-four?
It's line item five two five one oh. Oh, page, I'm sorry.
Forty.
Fifty-six. Fifty-six, okay. Yeah, so it looks like we're requesting three fifty-four and the expenses last year was three twenty-four. So this consists of Microsoft Office Exchange, which is a per-user base. This also consists of maintenance such as for firewalls. This consists of maintenance for protection for our computers. This is also protection for our spam email filter. So it's, it's quite a few things that we have to pay for in that budget.
So why, I'm happy that it's going down, but I'm just curious why it went down, why it's going down.
Maintenance? Three twenty-three.
Yeah, this is it right here.
If you look at your.
This is what we spend.
Yeah, but they adopted to here went up, right?
Right.
So.
I believe you have this information.
So as I was mentioning, it consists of like Carbon Black, which is something that we use for protection. You have Manage Engine, you have Tyler Tech on there as well too, which is Munis. You also have Everbridge, you have Vision, you have QDS. You have Proofpoint, which is spam filtering for our email system. You have our backup solution, which is Azure Blob that we use to back up our data here into the cloud. You also have our Voice of IP, which is our short telephone system that we have to maintain every year just in case anything happens, if it breaks or anything of that nature. So this, this, this list is, I'm not sure if you have the list, but this is the list here, yeah.
Thank you, that's it, that's it.
Councilman Boris.
Good, how you doing?
I know that, you know, you've done a lot for the city and we've improved. I just have a question, I don't know what, what is hot computing disaster recovery? What is that?
What page are you on?
Page one twenty-four. I was, I don't know, sixty-seven thousand, FY, FY twenty-five, this. It's capital. Yeah, one twenty-four, it says hot computing disaster recovery.
Yeah, so in any business, you have something that's called business continuity. Where if anything fails in this building, let's assume the building breaks down or burns down, or the equipment here burns down. What needs to happen is, we need to be able to quickly flip a switch in order for the systems to come back up, so we can still continue doing business. That's what a hot swap is.
I just wanted, thank you.
Yeah.
All set, Councilman? Councilman Boris, all set?
Yeah, I'm set, thank you. Thank you, Sharon.
Anyone else for IT? Okay. I think we're all set.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Jermaine.
Thank you.
Okay, it's seven o'clock. We're happy to hear from the Board of Education, the superintendent's with us, Matt Cavalaro's with us. Superintendent, you're more than welcome to have an opening remark. I know you did that on Monday, so whatever you wanna do.
You know, Matt, just also, Bob Bethy's here from the Board of Education, Judy Genzek, our Assistant Superintendent of Schools. And Dr. Stefania Larry is here, she's our Director of Pupil Services, because I know sometimes special ed and costs and our obligations sometimes need to be explained and, you know, why we're spending money and a lot of money on transportation and outplacements and those kinds of things. Yeah, you know, kind of my theme over the last year or two is to, you know, make sure that the, that everyone knows, starting with our board and you as well, that we've had some very good years here and COVID has allowed us to make some improvements, you know, with the money we have and the additional staff members we've had. Upgrading our facilities, we've done a lot of good work, but it's coming to an end. And my concern is, not next year, because next year will be the last money we have, the benefits of the ESSER funding, is what we call it. After that, we're gonna, we're gonna lose that funding. Now, the good news is, we still anticipate being an alliance district, so we'll get some increases. I mean, while the city hasn't increased us in about seven years, we've had increases from the state of Connecticut, we've had the COVID money. I still anticipate increases as long as we're an alliance district. Part of the five-year plan for the city is to increase us for, to about a million and a half next year. But frankly, we're going into teacher negotiations this summer and I've committed to Councilwoman Hoski at the time and I've talked to Chairman Masaro. We are welcome to, we can and we would like to have a member of the council serve on that, on our negotiating team, because financially, you know, I can promise them everything, I can promise them nothing, but you know, at the end of the day, I gotta be able to pay for it. So that will start this summer and, you know, while it sounds like I'm getting a really good increase, our salaries are low, especially at the bottom steps. And when you start increasing salaries, you're not gonna just increase them at the bottom because you don't, as you know, Ron, you've got a lot of experience in negotiations. You negotiate with senior people who aren't gonna be as concerned about what the, what the starting salary is. So that's, that's a concern of mine. I mean, any raise we get could easily be taken, eaten up by the, by whatever the negotiations bring. And honestly, and I'm not gonna make, I'm not making any bones about it, the teachers gotta get raised, or we're gonna lose teachers. You know, there's a statewide shortage. And again, I said it the other night, we recently had a cave breakfast and, you know, Bob was there and we talked about the fact that we're picking each other's pocket. I mean, teachers are leaving in the middle of the year for higher salaries. You know, and that opens up jobs and opens up classrooms and that's not a good thing. So that's where we kinda stand right now. I think financially, we're fine next year, I'm concerned going forward. And again, that's, if you hear nothing else tonight, I hope you'll hear that.
Yeah, and so, we're gonna talk about this, this coming year's budget, but before we do that, so, I hear you. And, and there are numbers in the five-year plan that there must be some data behind it, so what would be helpful for me if it's created or if it hasn't been created yet, when it gets created, is what was captured with the ESSER funds and what's gonna be the responsibility of the city when those funds run out, right? How many teachers, right? So we're gonna have teachers' wages and benefits, we're gonna have maintenance on some things, we have, I think, all those laptops that were purchased that are either gonna be end of life or they're gonna need ongoing repairs and I just, it'd be nice to kinda see, you know, what, what we need to absorb. And then, of course, you're gonna have to layer on, you know, wage increases and things like that, but I think it'd be nice to get a handle on, you know, I'm sure you have that.
I'm sure we can get you that.
Little under four million dollars of salaries.
We have something broken out, right, Matt?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think that'll, I mean, that'll be helpful because.
Yeah, no, I agree, we'll, we'll get you the information.
Yeah, because we're not gonna wanna go backwards, right? We only wanna go, we only wanna go forward and, and where are we in the pay scale from our similar situated communities as far as teacher salaries?
We're definitely low at the bottom, we're decent at the top. I would say a selling point of West Haven is that we have a ten-step contract. And for the most part, while next year they're frozen on a step, everybody's getting a raise, we have been moving people up steps. Ten steps is pretty good relative to a lot of other districts. In many cases, I know there are up there ten, fif, you know, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen steps in some contracts. So, again, an advantage is you get to the top pretty quickly. The hard sell is that if I could go make five thousand dollars a year or more, I'm gonna make it short-term and I'll worry about five years from now and five years, if the market's still the way it is, I can go get another job.
Right. And there's all sorts of strategies that, you know, it's not just, not just teachers, but, you know, there's, you know, sign-on, sign-on, you know, bonuses. You know, there's all sorts of things that people are using out there to try to, you know, help that, that initiation, I think that entry level.
Yeah, believe it or not, signing bonuses, we haven't talked seriously about that, but it's kind of a sore subject with some of our veteran teachers who've hung around, so it's, it sounds good, or even to limit them to maybe just some shortage areas, but not that easy of a, of a sell.
Yeah, yeah, it's a challenge, right, because where you think the money should be put, when you get done with negotiations, it may not be put there, right? So I get it.
Yeah, no, and not only that, but, you know, how could I, if somebody takes a signing bonus, okay, maybe I commit them for two or three years, but, you know, after that, you know.
Listen, it's, I know, it's, it's hard, it really is difficult, but, so if we could get that information at some point, that would be helpful.
Sure.
Finance Committee, Board of Education, questions? Councilwoman Hamilton?
So how are we doing with the, like, the boiler situation at Carrigan? Where are we with that?
Okay, frankly, I'm concerned. And here's why I'm concerned, we've had some issues there this year. And I appreciate the two point one million dollars that you guys have appropriated through ARPA. The problem is, the other half of the project, we're waiting for that to be part of the bonding package. So, you know, and again, Ken's got a plan, but I'm one of these guys, I'd rather not start the project unless all of the money is there or I know I can count on the money, because we're not gonna start half a project. And you know, Rob, and the other issue with us is that we can't just shut down the boilers in the middle of the year. These are projects that have to do go when we're, we're in the middle of a shutdown, so it's almost too late to start for this summer.
Wow.
So I'm concerned about Carrigan. It, it, just, I'm not asking for another school, but I am worried about the amount of dollars we're going to have to invest in Carrigan over the next several years. You know, again, I can't ask you to go bond for another school, but, you know, we do get seventy percent back from the state when we do a new school. The question is, and we, we were able to do the, show you this with the high school, show you this with Washington School. What are we gonna have to put into that building over the next five to ten years as opposed to if we build a new school and you bond for it over twenty years, what's the better value? We haven't gotten that far. My suspicion is that that building has. My suspicion is that that building has a lot of needs.
How much is the whole project for the boiler?
It's about $4.2 million. Well, it's not just boilers. It's, and again, don't ask me what this is, but it's piping, and I don't know how you re-pipe or send pipes in a brick building, you know. It's quite a project, because they're rotting, the pipes are rotting. I think I showed you the pictures last year.
So, Neil, nothing's reflective in the capital plan for the other half of that Carrigan project?
It should be 2.1, Dave, I thought that was...
There's nothing in 24 for, there's...
I have it in 23.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's part of the problem, I think, and again, it's nobody's fault here, but we're behind in the bonding. We anticipated that bonding taking place.
This is current year bonding?
Yes. As you know, the bond package is poorly presented to this council.
Yeah.
And so it did not, it did not happen. That other 2.1 was on that.
I'll only speak for myself, but I thought that the total project was 2.1, and we transitioned that from the bonding to the ARPA money. I had no idea it was a $4.2 million project.
In last year's, in last year's, it wasn't even two years, 2.1?
I think had the bonding proceeded accordingly, it would have been fine, but because it didn't, you know, we can't do half a project. And again, I think if you were to ask, in our opinion, that's the big, our biggest immediate need is to get those up and running.
Absolutely. That's very concerning. Well, how about Washington School project? Is there, like, do you anticipate any issues there?
Well, I know they're short right now, but I know we've been working closely with the state, because the cost of projects, all building projects have gone up, and the state has allocated more funds to a lot of other districts. We're in the process of making an application and making a case for more funding. But as of now, we are on schedule. We are planning on moving the kids. Once the school year ends, we'll be moving everything out of Washington School and moving it over to Malloy, and we'll be utilizing Malloy. The thing is with Malloy is, in order to make that work, we're gonna, and this is paid for out of the project, we're getting six modular classrooms. So, which I think is a great solution. For two years, it's certainly a really good solution.
So it's safe to move forward with the shortage kind of lingering over our heads?
We kind of, that was a concern that I expressed, and, you know, one way or the other, we're gonna have to figure it out. I mean, they're gonna knock that other building down this summer, and, you know, hopefully, we'll get an answer prior to anything moving forward.
Thank you, Neil. I'm through for now.
I wish I had better answers for you, Robin, but you ask good questions.
Chairman Masaro?
Neil, thanks for coming tonight, and not you too, and everybody else in the Board of Ed. I got a big, big question here. We took ARPA money to give to you to help cut down some of the bonding to get that project started in Carrigan. If that doesn't start, we could lose that money, and I don't wanna lose that money. If you gotta wait for bonding, how long is it gonna take to get the bonding?
Well, you know, again, Peter, Ken knows the rules better than I do. We are doing some, we are doing the engineering now, so I don't know if that considers that the project has actually begun, that may suffice. You know, the problem is the timing. In other words, when are we gonna finish? Because, you know, obviously, if the summer goes by and no work gets done, we're another year out from when everything is gonna be completed.
Yeah, but we, what the problem, what we could do is, if we start the project, if we start it, the money's guaranteed. They won't take it back. But if we don't start it, and we're late...
It's being engineered now.
Does it? I don't wanna lose the money, I mean, I gave it to you to start.
No, and I understand that the ARPA funds have to be shovel-ready, projects that need to get off the ground by a certain date. We're, you know, we're up against the same thing with, you know, even the money that we're spending on salaries, for example. We can only spend them up to a certain point.
Is there any prediction when you think you'll get an answer on the bonding?
You're gonna, you'll give me the answer when the...
We do plan to bond in September. That's when our most recent bands do. And included in that will be the 2.1 that's necessary for this project.
I bet you we have $2.1 million.
We haven't drawn down yet from those grants, I'm telling you. Prove me wrong. You know, again, I can't make those decisions, but it's almost to me like, you know, maybe there are some projects that can be bonded, and you would kinda give us the rest of the money. But again, I'm not asking for that, but, because I don't know what you have, everything that you have in the works, I have some ideas.
David, is that bonding package included in the debt service for next year?
Yes.
So there's no additions there? There's no additions, so it's in the recommended budget?
The budget will cover, will cover the bonding package as we see them happen.
Thank you.
For the fact we did it for five years.
Chairman, you all set?
I'm all set.
Councilwoman O'Connor?
The other night, hi. The other night you said that there's a bigger increase in English as a second language students. What is, do you know the percentage? And do you see the trend continuing? Because I know that'll make a difference in who you're hiring, correct?
Yeah, first of all, that's a shortage area, and we've actually lost a couple of people throughout the year, although I have to say, our, the person who oversees that department does a really good job of, you know, finding replacements. Do I see the trend continuing? Absolutely, it's getting larger every year. In fact, just as an antidote, this year, what I, we're in the process of kindergarten registration, and I'm getting a lot of emails with attachments where you can tell the parent how to go to somebody to do a translation, to ask for, you know, a specific school, or daycare concerns, or things like that. So I'm seeing that, and, you know, I'm speaking to our kindergarten, people are handling the registration. Steph, what do you see? Steph has actually been at some of the registrations, I wanted to check this out.
I know in district currently, we have, I think it's 1,200 EL students, which is almost on par with the number of students we have with disabilities. But it is quite a large population.
It is getting larger. And again, they're moving up a little, like, we're gonna have to add at all of our levels. The most challenging level is the high school level. Most of the kids in the primary grades, they pick up the language. Some of the issues we have at the high school are, for example, first of all, they can come from a lot of different places, and there are a lot of different dialects of Spanish and whatnot. But these are kids that have never been to school, so it's very difficult to teach them English.
So, quick math, the EL students are about 20% of the total school population of children.
And then my second question is a totally different thing. While Washington School is being built, I'm assuming all the kids will be bused to Malloy. So in a perfect world, transportation costs should go down in two years, right? Because you're paying more, to use more buses now?
We think it's about three buses that we're going to need. The issue is going to, we're gonna have to stagger the time a little bit and make Washington start a little bit later, because the bus company doesn't have the bus drivers. So we'll stagger the time, and that should cover that. But the contract is up. We're actually, we're trying to get that contract out to bid, because one of the things we need to do is create the, create those routes for the kids at Washington. In fact, Steph and Alicia Lamizani, the principal over there, are working on a letter to, just to reassure everybody that we're gonna be transporting all of the kids to Washington, I mean, to Malloy.
Thank you, I'm glad you're putting it out to bid, because Matt knows Marble asked that first thing.
You know, we thought that Washington might be the reason why we should ask for it, but we said, you know, it's not worth it. I mean, it's gotta go out to bid this time. And I think you guys made that clear the last time we began the waiver.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you guys for coming. The enrollment numbers over the last couple of years, those numbers are going up?
They're pretty stable. I can tell you, I have a 10, every year I got a 10-year projection. They're supposed to go down. For the most part, they have been, with the exception of the high school, which is, they're right now about 1,800, I'm not gonna tell you the exact number. They're at 1,870 students. We built the school on a 10-year enrollment projection of about 1,585. Now, I think COVID had something to do with that. We opened our buildings much earlier than New Haven, so a lot of kids who were attending, from West Haven, who were attending magnet schools in New Haven came back to us, because they had the chance to go to in-person learning a lot sooner. That's one of the reasons. You know, we also have a brand-new high school, so I think it becomes a more viable option, where people aren't looking for other alternatives. So, yeah, it's, even at the high school, it's supposed to go down. I haven't seen it yet at the high school, but I do see it trending slightly downward everywhere else.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, how are you? Thanks, thanks for coming. We talked about the Carrigan and the money we gave, and the sports complex as well, that ARPA money. That money that we gave there, that will cover the whole thing, do you, you know, getting the whole thing done?
That's our budget. We, in fact, we met, yesterday, we met with the designer, and we're firm on the budget. In two weeks, I'll have, I'll have a design and I will have a price. And, you know, we will work within the budget, and they're pretty confident. The name of the company's FieldTurf, they're doing all the high school fields in the area. They're actually recommended by the CIAC. They're pretty confident that we're gonna, that we'll fall in the, but it's got to. You know, we don't have any extra money to give to them.
Right, well, that's, the reason why I was asking is because we were told that, let's do this, because that'll alleviate the bonding issues. And with that part, I see, but I think with Carrigan, we weren't told the whole story.
Okay.
So, you know, so, and nothing against you guys at all. And, you know, I do whatever I can to give to kids, and, you know, I'd even pay extra if I had to, to help out the kids. But thank you for all you've done, and I do thank your teachers.
No, and just remember, that kinda, I mean, there's a kind of a story behind, a backstory behind the whole ARPA money, you know, and that, you know, we had given back when the schools were closed. We gave back more than we would have liked to. We would have never given it back, except, you know.
No, no, and I get that.
And I know you guys understood that, and I, by the way, in fact, I just recently made contact with Bridget, and I said, you know, Bridget, I know you drove this, because, you know, nobody quite understood, you know, all of the money that we gave back. And, you know, she sees the need, because she does the cheerleading, and, you know, she'll tell you that, you know, that there's some bad spots there. It needs to be replaced. And the track is the original track, it's over 40 years old.
No, I wasn't like arguing that fact and stuff. It's just the overall picture that we got.
No, that's covered.
I just wanna make sure that whole thing is covered, and we're not bonding on top of that. Thank you, I'm all set, Jim.
Hi Neil, how are you?
Good, how are you?
I'm well, thank you. For educational media supplies, is that gonna be given to all of the schools this year? So if we, like laptops, iPads, how does that work?
Yeah, we actually, we actually have a program in place where we've actually, which worked out, has worked out really well, where we're leasing the computers. And we do, we've been able to implement system-wide. So there's been, like, no schools, you know, it's not like we're doing one school at a time. We've been able to do the whole district. And when we release, which will be a year or two, Matt, will, you know, it will be done equitably across the board. And one nice thing we're also doing, because we have all these computers, we'll have like a bank, you know, of ones that are still in decent shape, in case things break, or we wanna use them for summer school or things like that.
Right.
So for like laptops and Chromebooks and those items, we use multiple line items in our budget to afford them.
Okay.
Education media supplies is one, and the technology line item is another one that we tend to grab from to supply as well as those things. And then we also supplement, you know, based on the Alliance Grant, we're allowed to buy technology for district-wide, the Title I grants, really focus on the Title I schools. So it's not only the educational supports, while it's one of our lowest total line item budgets, it's supplemented very greatly by all the federal and state grants we get. So there's a lot more money that we put at that base than just the 1.5 that you say.
And worst comes to worst, one thing I don't like is doing one school at a time. If anything, we would do it by grade.
Right, that makes sense.
So it's more equitable.
That makes sense. And for maintenance, you said every two years, depending on?
You know, no, we're leasing, and we're on a three-year lease.
Okay.
They actually, the company tried to push a five-year lease on us, but the reason we didn't want the five-year lease is because the warranties on the computer run out after three years.
Right.
We thought, you know, it's worth paying a little bit more to do a three-year lease.
Absolutely, yeah, that makes sense. Thank you so much. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay, Councilwoman Garthway?
Hi Neil. I have a few little questions on page 19 and 110.
Which budget are you working off of, ours or the mayor's budget?
The mayor's. So, we have, in the central office, we have travel. In previous years, there's been $800 budgeted and no travel. And then now this year, we've got $77,200.
So, yeah, that's it. So what we tried to do was, we tried to modernize our budget and combine areas within the budget, uh, line items together. So we're not gonna fund some, and we're combining it into that one item. That 77 is a combination of central office travel, travel maintenance, and a few other items. The way our budget was set up in Munis, our operating system, we, I manage, there's about 1,000 accounts at least that were set up. So example, for G10, our teaching supplies, there's 191 sub-accounts under that G10 line item. So in an effort to be more efficient and more effective, we combined...
What's now included in that 77,000 is the question?
It's the, it's the central office travel, central office dues and conferences, teacher conferences dues, teacher and teachers admin, and the travel maintenance.
Where's travel dated?
This is...
Oh, it's the maintenance guys' travel that they receive, because we don't have trucks for everyone.
Yeah, this is line EO2.
If, in our budget, we, it kinda spells that out, if you have our budget. Yeah, so we're just combining...
It just jumps right out at me, because I'm like all excited, there's nothing in there.
No, no, it's not like we're going on trips.
That's what I was wondering.
It's a combination of four line items within the line item.
Okay. And then, so I'm looking again at the mayor's budget. We have, on page 110, F06, photocopy services went from 269 to 383, a difference of like $120,000, just wondering.
So we combined FO6 photocopy services, FO8, I'm sorry, FO4, printing and publishing, and F10 data processing services into one line item.
Okay, I see it now, okay, that makes sense, okay. That's really it, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Neil, what's the total Board of Ed budget with city and state combined?
About $140 million, a little more than that.
It's, yeah, it's about just under $130 million. With the, with the city allocation, the state allocation, the Alliance Grant allocation that we receive, all of our federal grants, and the COVID relief funding that we still have.
I'm just trying to shore up the budget. So page, mayor's budget, page 106, mayor's recommended budget, total $89,964.21. So, the state's appropriation is more than that, right?
For our local operating budget?
For the total budget.
No, the total, okay, so there's three different funding sources that make up our, the 89.9 that the mayor allocates, or the council allocates to us. About half of it is local taxpayer dollars. The other half, slightly below half, is the ECS, yeah, the ECS grant.
Education cost sharing.
And then a portion of our Alliance Grant is given to the city to make them whole. And any increases of that grant moving forward come directly to the board.
But there's also the special ed grant, and then there's the federal grants, which are like Title I, Title II, what are the other ones?
Title III, EL bilingual, special ed for preschool, special ed district-wide.
I understand, I was trying to shore that up with page 23 of the city budget. Budget breakdown, city Board of Ed, so now I understand... Budget breakdown, city Board of Ed. So, now I understand. They pulled the, for, for the chart, they pulled out all that grant funding and it's, it's seventy-seven point five million and the state is ninety-five point nine.
Well, you're, and on that page, it also includes the debt service that we don't play for when the, for that budget.
Right.
That's, it'll be different.
So, twenty-three to twenty-four, that point four percent. That point four is debt service then, because the, the operating budget's flat from, from this year to next year, right? So... So, it appears that the, the operating budget went up a couple million dollars? Even though the city side was flat, you were able to achieve a flat with the extras, you got some extra state funding or next year?
Yeah, we got, uh, we got a, uh, we...
Just about a million dollars.
About a million dollars in Alliance funding.
So, you were, you were able...
Plus the ESER funding, which is still being used to cover salaries.
Yeah. I'm just, you were able to handle all of the in, increases, like insurance increases, electricity increases, which must be substantial in that, in that million dollars from this, this year to next year?
Well, every one of our funding sources has increased. So, our federal, our federal grants have, have received increases. Um, we received four separate COVID relief, uh, funding grants, which were, which one runs out at the end of this fiscal year. The last one runs out at the following fiscal year. So, by shifting salaries around and, and hiring, you know, new teachers and the savings that that acquires, yeah, we're able to.
So, net add is much higher than a million dollars.
Yeah, oh, absolutely, absolutely. Absolutely.
I was gonna say, that's a neat trick. If you did that, tell us how.
How you did it, right?
The net increase is much higher than, than a million dollars.
Yeah, okay. All right. And then are there any potential surprises? Like, I know a couple of years ago, um, New Haven looked to grow revenue by maybe charging us for the West Haven students to go to New Haven magnet schools. Or is there anything kicking around like that, that, that may surprise us in the budget?
I don't see it. Um, yeah, I, I think New Haven has tried. You know, one thing I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't rule it out completely. And the reason being is, I don't think, I don't think they're getting the participation with magnet students, which lowers the amount of money, ECS money that they receive. So, could, yeah, they could. I don't think they will, but I, it, it, it is a possibility.
I would say the biggest surprise is if the state actually passes that legislation that says all teacher salaries needs to start at sixty thousand or above. You know, not only does that mean your new hires will be... Starting at sixty thousand, every, every teacher that we have that's currently making under sixty thousand will have to be increased as well. So, that, that would be an astronomical amount of money at this point.
I'm sure the, I'm sure the state would fund us.
We would hope, we would hope that money.
Back when I started in nineteen eighty-six, that's when they had the first, the original teacher enhancement act. And it was great because the state did subsidize it for a couple of years. And after that, the city's got the bill. So, you, you might be okay even if that happens, but eventually you're gonna pay for it.
And how about special ed trajectory? What's it looking like?
What do you, what do you...
Well, you know, as far, yeah, yeah, enrollment.
Turn to the special ed expert.
You could come on up and tell us.
So, in previous years, um, for students that were outplaced, we typically averaged around a hundred and thirty-five, a hundred and thirty students. Um, fortunately, we're, we've been able over the past couple of years to provide intensive supports in district. So, we've been averaging around one eighteen, one twenty, um, which helps, uh, ultimately keeping kids in district, which is my preference. Um, near the, at their home schools or a school within the community, helps with transportation costs, um, and just overall. As far as number of students in our schools, um, we, like I said previously, with EL, we are averaging around twelve hundred-two. Um, so, a trend that we've been noticing in district is that our overall enrollment is decreasing slightly, but our needs are increasing. Um, so, our number of students with disabilities and our number of students requiring English language instruction.
You know, again, real quick, but like we have, right now, the, right now, the enrollment's five thousand nine hundred seventy-four students. But with, with special ed and with EL, yeah, that's, that's forty percent of your student population.
And, and I'll add, from, from my standpoint, while Steph and her team are doing a tremendous job. Getting the kids, they look, the numbers down, the, the price of the tuitions that the kids that are out of district need continue to, to raise. I mean, these are, these are for-profit companies that struggled, obviously, during COVID that are gonna look to make their, their numbers back on, on the town's backs. I mean...
Yeah, we've seen a big increase in that, in those schools.
Uh, just one example, and this was a few years ago. Um, we had one school that increased their tuition twenty-six percent over three years. And there's nothing that really anyone could really do about it because these programs that these children's needs are so intensive or are so tailored to whatever their disability may be, they're kind of the only game in town.
Well, we have been thinking out of the box and we've been partnering with ACES to have our own outplacement in district. So, we do have ACES classrooms within district, um, at a much lower tuition rate. Um, and then with transportation, we have the, um, the, uh, regionalized transportation. So, kiddos that are going, um, you know, perhaps to North Haven or Hampden, um, we're sharing transportation with other cities. So, there may be stops in, um, neighboring towns going up there, which saves us also on transportation costs.
And has the work, do you have certain classrooms set aside for ACES, ACES instruction?
Yep. So, we do have, uh, we're fortunate in district that we have the, the continuum of services. So, students can receive inclusion support in their classroom. We have resource support if they need to be pulled out. We have self-contained classrooms where it's just students with disabilities, um, and it's led by a special education teacher. And we also now have this, um, more therapeutic type setting that's, um, in collaboration with ACES.
Accra, how's that, Accra, correct?
Yep, we have two classrooms over at Accra and then we have one classroom up at high school.
Councilman, uh, Chairman Masaro and then Councilman Donovan.
Yeah, I got a couple of questions. I heard on the news that the governor set aside quite a bit of money that kids during COVID that didn't get a proper education or didn't attend school, he put out money to help those kids that were behind. Is, are we getting any of that money or is that all for Hartford?
Well, ESER funding allows us to do that. We've hired a lot of support, support. We didn't have classroom teachers. We added support staff in, uh, language arts, math, a couple of Yale students. We have, uh, one, one thing this district has, people have asked me a lot about social workers. Every school has at least one social worker. So, we were in good shape to start with, although we've added a couple. I think district-wide with, with the nine buildings we operate, we have, what, fifteen social workers around that number. So, we, we have pretty good support there. We've added guidance counselors at the high school because we thought that that's where, you know, when the kids came back to school, if they came back as a sophomore, junior, they needed to start planning for, for graduation. We're even doing some things now with a career center where if a kid graduated, you know, and they're having trouble finding their way, they can come back and work with our career center. So, the, the short answer is yes. We've, we, we, we have programs in place. Uh, and we are working with, we just received a grant with Hill, um... Hill Health, where, where they're gonna be offering, uh, opening a clinic for our kids at Washington and Saban Rock. We currently work with Optimus at West Haven High School, so there's a, a, a clinic there. So, yeah, I mean, we're, we're, we're doing a lot.
I understand, but are we getting any funds from, from Hartford to help you out? Additional to the ESER funds?
Uh, we, well, I, I, I know like State Representative Boer asked about a particular grant, but one of the things it allowed for was for us to hire social workers. We didn't feel like we needed them and you couldn't use them to pay for people that were already on staff. So, we really weren't eligible for the grant. There are some things that we, we, we're trying, but, um, no, I would say, I would say then the answer is no. But we, you know, again, I think we've got really good support in place.
Yeah, a lot, a lot of those, those new funding sources are, are, are so heavily targeted to a specific thing that it's not that we're not looking for the money. It, it, sometimes it doesn't make sense because there's, there's so many strings attached to the money that it doesn't really meet our, meet our needs or, or we have any need for it.
My other question is, uh, the kids that don't live here from other, like from New Haven and stuff, are we keeping an eye on that? Somehow, some way, where it's costing us money? They don't really live here?
I mean, they have to, there's a Board of Ed policy which says they have to show proofs of residency when they register. We do, um, you know, when we get suspicious, we do, um, the way it works is we would send them a letter saying, based on an investigation, you don't live here. And then the burden of proof shifts to them to prove that they are. But, you know, Pete, I, I, I'm not so sure that that's the case. I think there's a lot of people having to really accept that the changes in this community and understand, you know, what our, what our schools look like and what the needs are, you know. So, to say that these kids don't live here, I, I think they do.
Because I see a lot of people coming from the other side, dropping them off the bus, they wait for the bus.
If you give me the names, I could have them investigated. I have to use the school resources. But that, you know, I, I mean, I get calls like that all the time, but it, it, I gotta have something to go on because once they're in, they've proven residency. They've, they've met our requirements to be here. Now, here's what happens more often than not. Kids start school here and then they move out of town. It's hard to, it, it, it's hard to find that out. There's gotta be a reason. A lot of times, it's a disciplinary reason. You know, when you're going to try to find the parent during the course of the day or you're sending a letter home and it comes back, then you can, then you can find, then you can figure it out. But once they're, and by the way, once they're here, it's really hard to get kids out. The law is on the kid's side. I mean, we work with, uh, we, we work with the State Department of Ed all the time. And most of the time, the, and I, and I know, and I understand why. I understand the taxpayers, but I also understand that most of these times, these are, these are kids with a lot of needs and they don't wanna disrupt the continuity of the education and the state sides with, with the, with the children.
And my last thing, in your budget, I really liked your, you guys are getting your raises in twenty-two oh-two thirty-four. That's great.
Thanks.
What do you mean?
I don't know what you mean.
There must be a misprint.
You got a misprint, right? Two oh-two thirty-four. Yeah, twenty-twenty-three.
It's too bad I'll be retired.
Councilman Donovan and then Councilwoman Tucker.
Uh, I actually, uh, cavalero answered my question. I was gonna ask about the social workers and if you knew how many there were. So, I'm glad to see that we have an abundance of them. Thank you.
Councilwoman Tucker.
Good evening. Question I have is, have you guys done an assessment yet to see how many teachers fall below that sixty thousand dollar salary that if that legislation passed would be impacted?
We haven't done an assessment. We can give you that number just by looking at a... Yeah, we can give, we can get you that number.
We don't know off the top of our head.
I, I know, but I know, I could tell you this. Usually, we have about five hundred sixty certified staff. Approximately half of them are at top step. In other words, they've got at least ten to twelve years' experience. And I tell you, you know, interestingly enough, um, here's what I'll say. We, we try to find reasons not to hire somebody at first step. I mean, an elementary teacher, they're fairly common and easy to find. We can get away with that. But if it's a science, an area like science or whatnot, and they've substituted for a year or they've done their student teaching in one of our buildings, we try to bump up the salary a little bit as best we can. But usually about half are on top step. And I, and I'll bet you, I'll bet you a good number of them are at fifty percent. But we, we, we have that number. It's an easy number. We can get it to you. Absolutely.
Okay, so what, what, will you be planning to kinda, well, I'm not sure what the impact would be on the budget. Obviously, we fall short this year, correct? Because you're not able to plan for that now.
Well, no, remember, when you negotiate with a teacher's salary, you negotiate a year out.
Okay.
So, in the worst-case scenario, if we weren't, weren't able to reach an agreement with the teachers over the course of the summer, you go to binding arbitration and by usually around the month of November, you know what the arbitration settlement ha, is. And we prepare for that over, during the next budget cycle. Now, keep in mind, when you're negotiating, if you don't wanna pay, this is the, you wanna be on our side because part of what an arbitrator looks at, as you guys know, is the ability to pay. So, on that area, if we really, you know, we would do well in arbitration. But doing well, does that help us or does it hurt us? Because if, if this, if an arbitrator says, yeah, no, this, uh, you guys can't reach an agreement. We're gonna go with this lower salary scale, we, then we lose teachers. So, you know, it's certainly my hope that we would come to an agreement with the teachers prior to having to go that route.
Right, right, right. And I guess the other question I have is, um, what if any programs do you have that are focused on, uh, mental health services for the, for the young people?
So, like Neil had mentioned, we have, um, so, social workers and school psychologists at each of our main buildings. Carrigan, Bailey, and the high school have school counselors as well. All of them work, they're considered ancillary staff, um, who, they have classroom lessons where they're doing whole group instruction on social emotional learning. We're doing, um, small group instruction, um, usually during lunches, um, to work on peer relationships and some coping skills. And then we have kids that also receive that individualized, um, social emotional instruction. And Neil had also mentioned that we're very fortunate to have, um, the school-based clinics, which are twofold. So, at Carrigan, Bailey, and the high school, um, students can receive health services, um, through the clinic and also mental health services through the clinic. We have a clinician that attends all three buildings and students, students can receive, um, their therapy during the course of the school day, which is very helpful for families because, um, it is very challenging to get appointments now after school because they're booked. Um, and clinicians have a lot of more availability during the school day.
And I just, I just wanna add that, do you really need... You know, a lot of times, it's more than what the schools can do. I mean, when you really, when you see, you know, what these kids are coming to school, the environment they're from, you know, it's family counseling. And that's why I think these partnerships with Hill Health and, and those kinds of things are gonna help us because they get, they get the entire family involved. Because it's, a lot of times, it's, it's certainly not what the, what the child does or the child's a victim of their environment.
And then now with the, the new grant, we're able to expand to Washington and Saban Rock and that's on to start next year. But, um, even now, kids, um, receive, are participating in some teletherapy, um, you know, in collaboration with a school and home if they can, um, access their services after school. We're trying to fit it in during their day through telehealth.
That's great. I'm glad to hear it.
Can always use more though. I won't lie to you.
What'd you say?
I said, we can always use more. I mean...
That's why I'm asking.
Yeah, no, I mean, I think we're, we've, we've built a pretty good program and, you know, and after COVID, the kids came back and the needs were more glaring, but I, I don't attribute it all to COVID. I did, I think there's just a, a, a lot going on in the world today and, you know, it's...
For adults too.
Absolutely. I know, absolutely. No question.
The cover was snatched off. Thank you.
Neil, I just have a final question to Chairman Masaro's question. I'm curious, have you ever, I have, I've heard the rumors of, of that situation happening. Have you ever found any students?
Yeah, no, we, we have a process. Yeah, normally, we would, we, again, we, there's usually something that leads to us finding it. A lot of times, it's a discipline problem or a letter comes back that, you know, is not deliverable. So, what we do is we'll, we'll, we can send the school resource officer out to the home. Um, we send our, we just send our social workers out. Once we determine that the child or the family doesn't live there, then we send a letter which says, you know, after we've conducted an investigation, we've determined you're not a, a, a resident of West Haven and you're not entitled to, you're not entitled to a, um, free education here. At that point, most of the time, they'll withdraw. However, um, there's, there's an appeal process. The appeal, they have ten days to sign an appeal. First, they'll do an appeal, you know, with the board. We use a, a, a hearing officer. If, if they lose that, they can appeal to the state of Connecticut. They said the state, we, we usually don't get that far, but when they do, they tend to side on the kids. Now, our policy says, our policy says... our policy says our policy says that if you move after May first, you can stay the school year. And that's for all grades. A lot of districts say, well, if you got to your through eleventh grade and you want to do your seniors. Our policy doesn't say that. Um so, you know, we, you know, we do tell the people that they have to leave. We we've there there've been some cases where we've charged tuition. We work out a payment plan. But, you know, quite honestly, I'll tell a family or I've told families, you know, it's cheaper to send your kid to a private school. When you consider what our budget is and you make a simple formula, it costs a lot of money because we would include transportation costs and those kinds of things. But yeah, no, it's it's fairly common that a that a principal will send that letter out. Most of the time, like I said, they'll leave or or we'll work out a a date that's pretty like mu um mutually acceptable, like the the right before a break or, you know, stay until the April break or stay until the marking period ends, those kinds of things.
Can you can you tell us how many of those cases you've had? I'm really curious.
Uh a lot of time I I can't because a lot of times at that it's at the school level. If it gets to me, it means that the parent has uh decided to appeal our ruling. I mean, I can I can get the information probably from the schools, but I don't know.
I'm just really curious how many that that would be, what that number would look like. So um that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, you know, where's the is the rink broken out somewhere or is incorporated in the entire bu budget?
The rink should be separated.
It's on separate operating budget.
Where where would it be? Either in your document or the mayor's document. I may have overlooked it.
Why didn't I I thought we put that in there with the uh with the stadium.
I see the stadium sitting down, you know, for sixty uh
Yeah, because the stadium is still subsidized out of the out of the local budget because there's really no way for us for that for the stadium to be profitable because it's ninety percent use of, you know, our students in our town.
Yeah, no, I get it. That's why I didn't ask about it. There was six. It's a sixty thousand dollar, you know, supplement. I see that in the budget, but I don't see the rink.
I thought we put an attachment in there. I know we gave it to the board when we did their budget.
I could get you a copy. But the the rink is self-sustaining. It's it runs a it runs a small profit every year based on the rentals. There's no there are no uh city tax dollars going to the to the rink operation.
However, that, you know, I think there's a big caveat there that we don't have the money. In fact, one of our board members it it uh follows the rink very closely. One thing I don't have the ability to do is go out and borrow money, fix it, use my profit to pay for it. I mean, any capital expense would have to go through the council.
Yeah, and I see that in in next year. Is there some capital for for piping?
Ron, we did a we did a study. In fact, the company we use um is making a living because mo many of the rinks in New England are all around the same age. Hamp in this area got Hamp and West Haven, East Haven, which was shut down for a couple of years. You know, I've tried to warn our board and people who will listen that that day's coming. As as beautiful as that rink is, and it's a beautiful facility, you know, the infrastructure needs a lot of work.
So we're not subsidizing the rink anymore?
You don't know. No, you haven't subsidized the rink in probably ten years.
And how about the food service contract?
Uh very healthy.
That is also going out to bid um very shortly. But again, no sub no subsidy.
We we run that at a profit and we're and the profits by law have to be put back into the program.
And the equipment is our equipment or the food service?
Our our equipment that we, you know, we use the money that we make to upgrade the equipment.
Yeah, we just spend about uh a little over four hundred thousand dollars on on refreshing the the equipment, all based on the profit that the food service uh company made. You know, I
And one time that was a subsidy too, a pretty healthy one, right?
A large subsidy.
Between the rink between the
Food service at one time was four hundred thousand dollars a year coming out of our operating budget.
Yeah, no, that's good.
And just so everybody knows, everybody knows, on the food service, uh we're part of the the C E P. It's called the Community Eligibility Provision. So every student in West Haven, regardless of income, gets a free breakfast and a free lunch.
And and that works out uh and that works out because we get money back on every lunch we give out. The other thing we're doing is, you know, we basically serve all year round.
Right.
And that's also helpful too because we run the I I what's the name of the continuous uh
That seamless summer program.
Seamless summer program. Uh you know, we run that. We utilize our workers, but it's all paid for. We make some money off that.
Councilwoman Boris.
Thanks, Neil. I have a question. How are we doing with our Spanish speaking students and with our versus our bilingual teachers in the school? Are they overwhelmed?
We're doing okay, but we're there's we we need more. We we can but um, you know, we're able to subsidize with the teachers. We have a lot of bilingual aides. We have a lot of very educated people that can't work in their profession because they like especially a lot from um a lot from mid Middle Eastern cus Middle Eastern countries who came here and they're a doctor, for example, and they can't work as a doctor. So they're working as tutors and aides for us. So they're not certified. So between the teachers and the aides, w we have it covered, but we we definitely would if if somebody were walking my o uh office tomorrow and were certified, we'd probably we'd hire them. Because we we know we can always use more.
Thank you. Thank you.
Councilwoman Tucker.
Since the warehouse um that stored all the food burned down a few years ago, what happens now? Like, do you do you keep everything now for this for the students?
Our food?
Yeah, the food.
The food, um it most of it goes to the high school. We do have refrigeration systems that go there. And then um it's farmed out to the to the other bill. Uh Bailey in the high school cook. Carrigan cooks as well. The elementary schools, most of the food is prepared at the high school and then satellite it over to the elementary schools. Although they do more cooking now than they used to. Uh you know, it's not a five-star restaurant, but since we've since we've uh subcontracted or outsourced with Sidexo. They they really they up the quality and they up the number of choices that kids that kids have.
Okay, that's what I was curious about.
And that's why one of the reasons I believe we're making money too. We don't we don't run things that as as officially as outside companies.
Anybody else? Councilman Bruno?
Neil, the other night you when your open remarks, you had said we had to start the plan for the future with the Board of Ed. So when the pandemic relief money runs out in a few years, do you have a projected cost of what that's gonna cost?
Yeah, about four billion dollars we're gonna lose.
Yeah, we could I could get you a full plan.
But, you know, our plan is to, you know, to look at, you know, as teachers retire between now and then, start to prepare for that and maybe not fill some of the jobs. But, you know, obviously, we love to fill as many jobs as we can because the needs aren't going away. Uh you know, one of the things, and I I kind of harp on this with with my cabinet, my administrative cabinet, is make sure you read what's going on in the other towns. Like, when you see what happens is happening in Milford or East Haven got a million dollars, yet they asked for five. I think a lot of them and we probably relative to those communities, Hampden asked for a nine percent increase. We probably got a lot more funding. Um but that's what's happening now. The it it's running out. You know, we're not the only we're not the only community in that boat. That's why I'm kind of telling you now and making it, you know, making you putting you on notice, kind of.
No, I I appreciate that.
Because it's not just salaries too. I mean, everything is increasing, whether it's whether it's the outside placements tuition, whether it's, you know, just general service on our maintenance, you know, everything is increasing. And really, the only discretionary in um line items that we have in our budget is at is the instructional supports that we provide to the school. So if things continue to to run over, the money is taken directly out of that to 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 pay for the the contractual allegations that we have. So it's a all-encompassing increase that we're gonna
I understand. And you'll you'll get me those projected numbers.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Councilwoman Tucker.
Yeah, the last question I have, you might have said this, um, do you have a crisis intervention team?
All the schools have.
They you do. Behavior health, crisis intervention teams?
Yes. And we meet as a we meet as a group too.
Yep. So each building has a worldwide um data team and then um which looks both at um social emotional wellbeing and academics. But then we break it down to grade level data teams for academics. And then we have crisis teams that meet very regularly um to talk with outside providers too on um, you know, how they're accessing services outside of the school setting and any wraparound supports we could provide.
The positions that are funded by the Esser grants, and you said four million dollars, maybe that might be what it ends up. Does that include like are these are those positions getting benefits too?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so that's a full number. It's not like we add on benefits after.
No, no, it's a it's a full number.
Okay.
You can you you're it's allowable to use benefits as part of the
Okay, that's fine. Yeah, I was just wondering.
Yeah, no, no, that that's a good question.
Thank you. That's it.
Neil, food insecurity. So I know that there's a lot of um organizations. Um we do it at the university. So if there is food that we're planning on catering, we have trays that are untouched. We we work with an organization, Havens Harvest, and they come and they distribute it. Um is that something that the school could look at?
We've looked at it, Ron. One of the problems is like, you know, once you put an apple on a kid's tray, you can't give it back. I mean, I should have our our food service director um speaks to that topic very well. But because we get complaints about all the time, the kids are throwing their apples out, the kids are doing this. And unfortunately, we're obligated to give them a balanced meal, you know, that includes the fruit, the milk and whatnot. They don't use it. They throw it away. Um I think one time we started looking at, you know, leaving it on a table and whatnot. We were told, you you can't do that, you know.
Yeah, it really needs to be untouched. So I didn't know. Maybe, you know, maybe your operation doesn't allow for that, right? So um just something to consider. And how about um if you could give me a couple of sustainability initiatives that that you guys are doing? Do you do anything with with composting or um I don't think this this I don't think we do recycling, which is something for for another budget meeting. But I would imagine that you fall under the city regarding those types of initiatives, right?
Yeah, we do have all the um, you know, you see them at the schools. There's the two dumpsters. There's the cardboard and glass bottles and there's the the trash. So the you know, the problem is it's separating them. If you get them, you know, we do have a recycling bin in all of the classrooms. And if you get it early, fine, or the custodians uh delivering supplies and emptying supplies. Yeah, it's easy to throw the cardboard boxes in the bins, but it's hard to ask the kids to to get it done during the course of a twenty-minute lunch period, for example. That's 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 been a challenge, although we've been asked to look into that. But it's it's frankly, it's just hard to do, to get them in and out and clean up and whatnot, you know.
Yeah, um and maybe you could and 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 we should I should have thought about it. But um, you know, maybe food service they could look at, there's an opportunity to to for and it may be a different animal what you do, but you know, the food scraps or whatever. And then, you know, there's, I think it's I thought I forgot the name of the company and they come and they they pick it up and they bring it to, you know, farm farming areas within Connecticut and they use that for compost.
I know when Doug Coulter was here, he was working here. He did have conversations with Meg Kingston, who's our food service director.
Right. Thank you. Councilwoman O'Connor?
Um, I hate to bring this up, but I know it's something that uh people have to think about nowadays. How often do you have school shooter drills and the kids know what to do?
We have regular drills coordinated by the uh police department. And they they pretty much schedule them all. Active shooter drills, lockdown drills, of course, the fire drills, which we always have to do. They're they're done on a regular basis and we do follow the law. And most of them are are done under the direction of our school resource officer.
And then I have one more question. Um my son and his friends mostly graduated in twenty nineteen. And I know some of them are having a hard time finding a job because they're always at my house. Could they could they use the the job center or are they too old at this point? Do you have?
No, we uh, you know, my understanding is we're looking at, you know, we're looking for are they welcome kids who have graduated and they'll do the best they can to work with them, point them in the right direction, be it be at school or or career.
Thank you. That's really good information.
Teach them how to join the service.
Any other questions for the Board of Ed? Superintendent Cavallaro, Matt? No? Okay. Um seeing none. Thank you. Thank you for coming. Thank you all for coming. And um thanks, everybody. We are in recess until tomorrow at six P M.